One second, we'll be ready to start. Alright, I think we've stabilized, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, we are retiring from executive session and reopening the meeting. We're gonna begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being aborted. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. And I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Do we have anyone who's making recordings today? And if you could state your name for the record.
Thank you guys.
Awesome, great, from the enterprise, thank you. Anyone else, we'll check our attendees, seeing them. First, mission and vision, Leah.
Hey.
So our mission, the Fountain Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. And our vision, Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them. Thank you, Leah. Final comment, members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes of mine. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@fountain.org. Do we have any public comments this evening? Yes, if you can join us at the table and state your name for the record. And we'll send you the track on time on it, yeah, right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jaclyn McCarthy. I have three daughters at T-Ticket Elementary School. I'm concerned about the direction this district is going. I know a few teachers flew out to a conference on digital convergence. Fountain Public Schools presented two sessions at this conference and our assistant superintendent was nominated for an award and shared the Clipper Experience video. And yet, no information on this was shared with our community. It seems Fountain Public School has paid to partner with Modern Teacher and according to the Modern Teacher website, our school district has achieved stage three or higher in digital convergence. What is this? Now, I hear mastery-based learning field testing will take place in our classrooms in September. I'm asking to hold off on making these changes till parents and families can have more information, data, and research available. Please do not move forward with mastery-based learning and the removal of report cards and replacing them with badge books without a survey home to parents and options for families. I just found out my third grader is in a class where the teaching methodology has changed. She learns by listening to a voice recording of her teacher given the lesson and follows along with her Chromebook. This MCP Modern Classroom Project is an option for teachers. This type of learning does not work for my daughter. She suffered headaches and eye strain. I want to ask the district to provide screen time reports for all parents. I understand in 2018, as a district, we're looking to advance school technology. But given our experience with the pandemic, I think it's time to reevaluate that direction. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other public comments?
Hi.
Hi. And your name for the record?
Deanne Rockwood. And I am a former parent of students in the Fountain Public Schools system, but I work as a TA over at the T-Ticket Elementary School. Is the Fountain Public Schools system turning a course to self-checkout education? It feels as if we are investing in screens and software over teachers and direct support services. Could this be part of the reason why our drop-off rate is increasing? Students might feel disconnected from teachers as they are increasingly more connected to computers. Why are we able to find funding to send a contingent of staff to a virtual classroom conference in Colorado during ski season? And how ironic is that? Attending a conference on virtual preaching in person. Why do we have to beg for tools and manipulators to help students roll up their sleeves without some learn, only to be told there isn't enough money in the budget? Please, practice a much more thorough oversight of expenditures. Does our affiliation and use of Modern Teacher in Modern Classroom warrant closer scrutiny? How does Modern Teacher align with the expectations and values of Fountain Public Schools? How do these programs address the social-emotional needs of students post-COVID? How many administrators, coaches, and consultants does it take to run these programs? Please question how we are steering and tracking student learning, especially in new curriculum choices. Please, better inform the community and parents of steps that have been taken to date and continue to be taken toward our planned intent to automate education in Fountain. Transparency builds confidence. Please, show relational trust in the abilities of your dedicated, talented, educated, and dare I say, tireless staff. I'm begging you, please, help.
Thank you, John. You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Mike McCarthy. I'm a town meeting member, but I'm speaking here as a parent because I have some questions too and comments about a couple of the initiatives that are underway. Yeah. One is digital convergence. Fountain is already a stage three of digital convergence. And none of us really knows what that means other than more screen time in school and less time interacting with teachers, aides, and peers. The other is changes to reporting. All of our teacher professional development this year has been on the introduction of the Clipper Learning Journey. That's a lot of effort towards reporting as opposed to instruction. Our teachers strive to meet the students where they are. Will focusing on replacing report cards help them to do that? There's clearly an effort underway to enact these changes in our schools. And changes like this have an impact and require resources. As a parent, I have to ask why? What is driving these changes? How specifically would they benefit our children and at what cost? And where will the resources come from to oversee them? In other words, what will our kids have to give up for this? And when and how are we gonna know whether they're actually benefiting? There's a lot of emphasis being put on the metaphor of the Clippers. So in keeping with that, I'll say that our Clippers will be most successful if they feel that they are part of a fleet. That means having the ability to gauge where they are in relation to their peers, developing the trust to say to each other, "I'm lost", and coming to the aid of others who might be founding. I'm concerned that these proposed changes could prevent that. My wife and I picked this town and our home because of the quality of the teachers and the quality of the schools. And we're asking that appropriate care be taken when considering changes that will affect both of us. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Amanda and I'm a parent for a T-Ticket first grader and fifth grade preschooler. And I have concerns regarding Modern Teacher and digital convergence in our district. When I heard about this framework, I came upon a few interesting things in my research. One was a proposal from 2018 that was prepared by Modern Teacher and Les Miss Dern as one of three references. When I looked into these three districts, including the Delaware District, greater district, and Michigan, and Baltimore County School District, they each scored significantly lower than national public average in math, science, and reading, even four years after implementation of this framework. Another thing I found was a video testimonial on Modern Teacher's website by one of their so-called exemplars. And she states, quote, "I meet individually with my excelling students only once or twice per week." Now, I understand the need for digital tools at the high school or collegiate level when young adults have a better sense of impulse control, self-regulation, and climate management. Sure, these tools may fit, but not at the elementary level and not when they're quite literally still recovering from a digital start to their educational lives. That same exemplar noted that students have a choice on how to do their work in whichever modality they prefer, traditional pen and paper or on a computer. Mr. said the same last week at coffee hour, that students will always have a choice. I urge you to show me one child that foregoes a screen for a pen and paper. It doesn't happen in my house under our watchful eye, so I can guarantee it's not going to be happening in a classroom, particularly one where the teacher is meeting with kids one-on-one, once or twice per week. CDP recommends one to two hours of screen time per day, no more. Anything about this that links to negative effects on a child's mood, behavior, impulse control, and an increase in obesity. I can't imagine that a district who says that we can't bring cupcakes to fall on birthdays because it's unhealthy can be serious about implementing digital learning, especially with all of the resources and data at our disposal regarding its negative effects. If the committee is concerned with involvement numbers in this town, it would be my suggestion to hold off on implementing a digital learning experience at the expense of our kids because of the housing crisis in Fountain and varying enrollment numbers prioritizing digital tools over our children's mental and physical health certainly will. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amanda, what was your last name? Mark. Any other public comments this evening? I see, I check our attendees. Thank you all for joining us and sharing your thoughts, appreciate it. Next, on our agenda is student advisory. Hello.
Thank you guys for having me. Just a couple quick updates for this. On Thursday this week, the culinary and ceramics departments are holding a soup for the soul night, which I remember them doing last year, but I remember it pre-COVID when I was younger. It's a great opportunity for students to feel the piece of work that they've done in the CDP programs at high school. And it's a great opportunity for the community to see empty common ice cream, enjoy some soup maybe by fountain with the students. And just worth wrapping up this week. Girl talking was our last meeting standing, we lost in round two of the playoffs, a very close one, a game. Also, recently was the online version of judging for the same group of high school students. And I believe at once that is open this week. And then the in-person fair will be on Saturday, March 11th, which is this weekend. And then, I believe that's all I have for updates. So if you guys have any questions, that's something I talked about, weren't there?
Thank you. Any questions for Anna? Yeah, thank you. Always good to see you, thank you. And you guys. Is to act on the Fountain Egbertown Ferry letter, Dr. Door.
Yes, so Carmella was here previously and shared with us an array of opportunities for our students. I think that was discussed for our in-grade students. And we have Mr. Jay Keigho at the general manager of the Fountain Egbertown Ferry. He is donating in kind an equivalent of 13,500 to transport our students from Fountain to Cutting Hump. So I would like to recognize and have the committee's approval that I sent this thank you letter to him. The only cost to us is the cost of the gas, which is about 1,500 per trip. And it's our only other option of being able to get to Cutting Hump would be to take buses to New Bedford and take the ferry from New Bedford to Cutting Hump. And this is a considerable savings to the district. So I don't know if Carmella is actually here, I don't know. Did you want to add something to that? No?
Pretty much covered it.
Sorry, well, thank you.
And to be able to motion, I'll make motion to our students.
Ask for it to accept the connection.
A second. Great, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. Yes, thank you very, very much to Jamie Keigho for that extraordinarily generous in-kind donation. It's so important for kids to get to our islands that are close by and otherwise, some of these kids wouldn't even get there. So I'm very appreciative, thank you.
Absolutely, and it'd be great to cut it and did well. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing that, and we're all clear, all in favor, say aye. And my name includes. And that's it. You know, let's thank you again to the Fountain Egbertown Ferry for that experience for our students. And thank you to Carmella for working out all the details, I appreciate that. Yeah. Okay. Next is the first read of Paris of Right Grant of Lessons. And you have it in your packet, there's also a copy of it on the table to share. So what we'll do is, again, just read through. If there are any questions or concerns, jot them down and we will discuss it at our next meeting and vote. Is there anything this evening that stands out?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, other than dates, has there been any changes made?
Last year, we had the COVID protocols added, we removed that, but otherwise, this is still the same print that we've used in the past.
Yeah. A couple little things. So I'm wondering, on E, since it's specified that setup can only happen on weekends so that it doesn't disrupt with school, do we want to specify that also have a breakdown? I mean, that's really up to.
I feel like generally, it's a.
I feel like it is too, but you know, I never want to assume any. I sure.
We're not actually do that. We can, yes, but that is for purpose.
And I, on K, we say that they're required, oh, nevermind, it's definitely on the bottom of the file before commences use of the area. I missed that part. Nevermind, thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. Anything else that jumps out at you this evening? Okay, seeing that again, we will revisit this in our next meeting and vote on our action. Next, first read of bullying plan, Dr. Door.
Yes, so, you know, Deanne is going to review bullying plan. It has been reviewed at the school policy subcommittee level. And I'm just gonna turn over to Mary now, the chief of review. So, thank you, as you all know, there's Massachusetts enacted an anti-bullying statute which requires us to have a model bullying plan in place. We did have a bullying plan in place, we needed to update it. This statute was also amended a few years ago to include certain provisions that have to be included in the plan. Desi has a model plan, which our plan pretty much mirrors in many ways, except in the ways that we had to personalize it elements. So I will go, I'll try to highlight, I know it's a dense plan, the policy subcommittee, thank you, Terry. It's been written, so we've gone through this, we've really vetted it. It's been vetted by other groups within the district as well. On page two, one of the, one of the updates on the statute was we are required to acknowledge that certain student populations may be more vulnerable to bullying. And those categories there that are listed on page two are specifically right out of the statute. And these differ a little bit from our anti-discrimination harassment, legally protected classes that we have in our own policies. But that's because Massachusetts has found that these groups, that are not all legally protected classes, may be more vulnerable for bullying. But we also have a separate obligation to address students who may have been discriminated or harassed against based on their legally protected class. So this makes that distinction. Footnote three tries to explain that, that nothing in here, even though those categories in the anti-bullying statute, that does not prohibit us from taking action on discrimination or harassment claims. The plan really just then goes into, we state the mission, vision, and core values of the district, which is directly from the district mission and core values and different statement. Leadership, we just have to acknowledge that leadership at all levels plays a critical role. There was public involvement in developing a plan on page five. The various individuals and entities that are written there were given an opportunity to provide feedback on the plan. And at the top of page six, you'll see school leaders with input from families and staff are engaged in an ongoing process of assessing the adequacy of current programs, reviewing current policies and procedures. So this is an ongoing process. We're actually required to review this plan every two years, so we will continue to do that and update it accordingly. Also, on page six, Desi started developing in the 2015-16 school year a bullying survey called Use of Climate and Learn and Vocal Survey, which they administer in connection with NCAS. And Sonya's office actually is involved in evaluating and assessing that data so that that will inform our plan moving forward. We do analyze that data. The planning and oversight on page six, this is just the flowchart of what happens when we do get a bullying report and what personnel are involved. And some of this is repetitive, page eight, our priority statement. It says, and it's even bold as mentioned in the introduction, again, we need to recognize that certain student populations may be more vulnerable to bullying. We take case-by-case specific steps in response to those reports. I'm trying to look for, and obviously on page 10, we also take professional development will address ways to prevent response to bullying. And that must be considered when developing a student ID feed, which Joan is obviously very well aware of. There's certain notice requirements, annual notice to staff about the plan, this ongoing professional development about bullying prevention and intervention with staff and the students. It's introduced, the plan will be introduced for students through assemblies. And then we get into on page 11, some of the specific Fountain counseling services that we offer. Each school, it mentioned, has a coordination team that meets weekly to review students that may need support and how best to support them. And that certainly includes an assessment of a student may be experiencing bullying or vulnerable to bullying. We would develop safety plans for those students. I won't go through all of the, the list of resources, but the list of resources are there that we have in Fountain. Students with disabilities, again, the team is required to address bullying in the IDP process. We also refer students to outside services if students need that for help in counseling or any kind of outside support. I know this is dense and I'm going quick, but I'm trying to find like, the curriculum that we use is on page 15 and that's under review and will always be updated. This aligns with our bullying policy, which we recently updated. And then, really, the rest of the plan is talking about reporting. And who can report? Anyone can report. An important distinction to make, though, is under the bullying statute, only students can be targets of bullying, not staff, not adults, staff members, so only students. But staff members and students can be aggressors in bullying. So there's an important distinction. And then there are investigation obligations that we have in notifying parents and guardians. We even, if a student from another school district is involved in it, potential bullying situation, we have to notify the other school district. Then we do intensive investigations. We always want to be thorough and accurate and interviewing all of the necessary people that we need to. And once there's a determination made, whether bullying was found or not found, we will take corrective action, whether that's in the form of education, restorative, or disciplinary consequences, that is all on a case-by-case basis. And the, either party in a bullying situation, they have the right, we have to notify them, but they can appeal the determination to the Desi, to the problem resolution system. And then we have on page 20, just overall trying to really prevent bullying and teaching appropriate behavior through skill building, taking disciplinary action if necessary, always promoting the safety of the target and others, including witnesses and aggressors, because sometimes they may be, you know, a target of something further, if there was retaliation. There's, at the end of page 21, there's, so as I said, staff members can be aggressors. And if we get a bullying report that a staff member has allegedly bullied a student, then we investigate that accordingly. We, page 22, collaboration with families, we're trying to get resources out to families. Lauren and I did a virtual, first-time virtual anti-bullying statute forum back in January, I think it was. And there was one other thing. Oh, there's a real misconception, and we talk about it, it's in a couple of places in here, but oftentimes, students and parents think that if bullying occurred off school campus, that it's not within our curfew to take action. And that's not accurate, because if it does create problems for the student at school, we have the ability to intervene and take action. And now, and there's even been some case law in Massachusetts and in other parts of the country that have supported that, that there was Snapchatting and texting that was going on outside of school, but it created a real problem for the student, the target in school. And the court in Massachusetts supported that the school could take disciplinary action against those students. So that's, that's a key distinction. And now with cyberbullying and all the technology out of school, climate definitely can be addressed. On page 24, there's a section about relations to other laws. And it just, we just wanted to make clear that nothing in the plan prevents the school district from taking action that may involve discrimination or harassment based on a student's membership in a protected class. That is not what this plan is intended to, to do. We would, in fact, if there was conduct that amounted to bullying, but it was based on a student's membership in a protected class, we would actually address that as a civil rights investigation matter. And because those laws take precedence on the state anti-bullying statute. And I, the end is a form that reporters can use. They are not required to use this form, though, we make that clear. But it is, it's a helpful form that can be used when people are reporting.
Thank you. You read your title. It's very helpful, I think, as well. Any questions or comments? Kelly?
So my question, nothing specific to the, to the plan, but I, I wonder if you can explain the interaction between the plan as we see it and the policy? Because it references that this, that the Fountain Policy, the school committee policy, bullying prevention. Is that going to be this entire thing?
No, so the policy is more circumscribed and really just says, we don't allow policy. And the policy refers to the plan.
Okay.
So we didn't have the plan in place at the time of the policy, but we said we would be putting the plan as a link into the policy.
So this is more the procedure.
Yes.
The policy. Okay. Because I was worried that there's some things in here that are very specific.
Yeah.
Contact information, and we don't want to be constantly trying to update that. So that makes for a nice thanks.
But Desi said we have to put those names in. We also have that same truck, you know, we have to keep updating it. But that was a desert regulation, yeah, which means.
But at least we won't, but not in the policy, right?
Right.
So, yeah.
I think you're talking about two different things. I think, Kelly, you're talking about having potentially student or staff members' name on the incident report. And I think, Terry, you're talking about where it lists with the attorney general and those specific names that we would have to keep updating. That's what we talked about in policy, correct? And what, we didn't really talk about the form, because we didn't have the form. I think we were talking more about like the officials for, like, our administration.
Somewhere along, one principal's name.
Correct, that's what I mean, administrative, in the district's name. And I think, Kelly, you're talking about names on the incident report, is that correct?
I just, I just didn't want to have contact information in the actual policy. Overall, in school policy, because they change, you know, they change. So we would be constantly.
But we did, I think, policy to track, I'm trying to think, did you have that conversation? And Desi did say that we had to put, you know, Dr. Teller's name in there and principals' names. I just wanted to clarify, it sounded like there were two different conversations.
Thank you.
Awesome, Leah. So I have other. Yeah. In here, so on page 11, it's referenced that the school district provides culturally and linguistically appropriate resources. And I do believe that our ESL teachers are brokers when it comes to language acquisition. And I think that they should be included in this resource piece. I also believe that our interpreters are cultural brokers and that they should be included as a resource. And then in page 22, in collaboration with families, I believe that help packs should be included.
I, I'm so glad you said that, because I actually, when I was reading, going through it today. I know, I'm so glad you said that, because I actually, when I was reading, going through it um today. I made the same note.
So we're we're on the same page, and then um just I have a a question around the form, I know this is not a form that needs to be um used, but I'm just thinking about our our youngest learners and that. They would need help writing forms, so. Is there something, because I know this is saying that you could do this anonymously also. Is there something in place for a student who is a younger student to be able to communicate safely to someone? Or do something anonymous that wouldn't be filling out a form?
And and they don't have to fill out the form, and so typically what I've experienced anyway with younger students is. They do tell the staff member or a teacher and. Form aside, or whether a staff member fills out the form, they just, they document the information that way, so that the student isn't having to.
Okay.
Write down.
Thank you, yeah.
Margaret. Um my, on page ten, where it says principals as they're going to their different cases, like superintendent or designated. There's no one superintendent, so there should be agreed. Which is or designated. Second fair.
Oh, in such cases, the superintendent or their designated.
There's one, so there is an appropriate.
Well, it might be just for thanks, you know, the program. That they are considering your job.
Later on, it just says superintendent, it doesn't have territory. Yeah, later on, the doctor.
I think in other places, it says superintendent or designated.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. I can.
You have to say, no, can I move it?
Yeah, so this, uh and I'm not clear, and I just wanted to be fair about this, I'm not certain. Um it seems as if bystanders. Are sort of taken care of, but bystanders may not be perpetuated, but bystanders may be. Um. Not exactly the perpetrator, but some of them has reported on the event.
And I'm not sure, is that clear? Well, I think it's basically bystanders covered by witness, and any witness that is interviewed, if there's some culpability on their part, that would be taken care of.
That's what I want to hear.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I don't know, I guess it's something, um as always, thank you, Policy, for working on this, I know this is a big lift, so thank you very much for that.
But we have a new person at the home that really helps.
Great, uh so again, if there are read through, um if there are any other edits, um please let. Uh either Mary or Lori know, and then we will vote on that, so I have a bullying plan at our next meeting. Um next is a follow up discussion on redistricting. Um and so as school committee members know, we met last Tuesday to discuss um redistricting or looking at. The landscape of our our current um elementary schools. Um and to offer context to the public, the last time five of schools was redistricted was two thousand and four. Um and then there was a task force that was established in two thousand and twelve. To look at um whether or not to explore redistricting again. Um and so during our workshop last week, the retreat, uh school committee members, uh we looked at. You know, possible ways to mitigate um space issues within the schools, we reviewed that task force. Report, I think there were fifteen members on the task force, and it was a very comprehensive report of their findings from two thousand and twelve. Um and we just really took the opportunity to brainstorm and think of any additional questions that we may have. In order to make an informed decision, um and also most importantly, I I think for all of us, we really, Dr. Door gave us a really. Necessary snapshot of what the needs are at the school and how this is, it relates to the changing demographics of our students. Um so Dr. Door is actually going to share publicly some of the slides that she shared with us during the retreat.
You don't have to share just the data, you don't want me to get in the spotlight.
Um you can share that, whichever is easier for you, I don't know.
Happy to share the slides.
Yeah.
You should be able to.
I'd be. Thank you.
So you think, well, Dr. Door is doing, I think it's important, what we discovered is it's not so much um about the student numbers, as we all know, enrollment is down, it's about student need. And when student need comes to need for specialists, and specialists need space to do their work. Um and so many of our elementary schools are feeling that crunch of um needing adequate space to serve our students effectively.
There we are. So we have uh talked uh. About the the, as we said, the needs of the students, which means staffing uh needs um. You know, coincided with this, so we have, and if you see in, if I um. Ten, uh we had a, in our economic disadvantaged category, we've had twenty point nine percent. Of our students that um qualified under this uh category, and now we have forty three point six percent. Uh we have increased uh our reading specialist. Uh and uh mass support uh for our students um in this area. And then we are multilingual learners. We uh. In twenty, or I'm sorry, yeah, twenty ten, we were at one point two percent, and now we are at five point eight percent. We have increased uh our ELD teachers. Greatly over the time, I believe in in twenty ten, there was one teacher. Um now we have eight teachers uh in the ELD, so you can see that we're, as our student needs grow, our staffing also grows in these uh these areas. And uh the third slide I'm going to share here is the students with disabilities. Uh in twenty uh ten, it was at seventeen point five percent, it's at twenty two point two percent. You can see the upswing over the last couple of years, it's it's always been around seventeen to nineteen. Getting twenty, you know, here and there, but it is definitely uh an upswing up to twenty two point two, which we have also increased. Um our number of uh special education features, the number of teaching assistants. Uh that work directly with uh our students, so. Uh with the increase of of the needs, the increase of staffing, then the increase of space, so in our buildings. Uh we uh all of the additional teachers need uh space to work with our students. So um that was just part of our conversation as the needs of the schools.
Okay, look, Gloria. I think the point that. Really was clear, remember you were talking about a classroom, we had to choose special and and that we had said they weren't allowed to be together?
Yes.
Could you remember that and stated, because that shows. Why we need extra, extra space? Do you remember?
I do, so uh yes, at uh one of our elementary schools, uh Dusty had come in uh and come back with a lot of. And we uh we have shared spaces, so classrooms, often we have to have two specialists. And uh Joan, remind us who the two specials were in this classroom, uh because I'm not sure I got it right the other night, I was trying to remember.
Um.
Yes.
Yeah, actually, I I believe we had both, um well, there was the, I believe it was our. ELD teacher as well as our special education, this sounds like.
It may have been, I'm trying to which two we had together in the class.
There was another, there was one building where we where we did have some OTPG space and some special education, so what happened is there were both special education regs and civil rights. So it has to be, it's to ensure that there's equitable space for all students, um and that there's confidentiality of those services, so. Uh we need to make sure that we have to find space with a kind of an entrance or ingress into which it would be confidential and equitable space. So that's why sometimes one would think that we might be able to share with two particular providers, but. It depends on which provider.
Yeah, I just, I mean, we we have a man on that, but then just. When people see the less students, they they automatically. It's hard to convince them, so.
Yeah.
Relative data helps why.
Yeah, and I think another outcome of our workshop and just sort of talking this through is recognizing that. Our town has changed so much, and they continue to change as well, um and so being really mindful of redistricting for the the right now. And potentially that being an issue going forward with, you know, new development and and more density in certain areas of the community, so. I think we definitely, from that perspective, we need to do more research with, you know, the swipe board, what is on the radar for for housing and and various stakeholders in the community as well. So is there anything else we'd like to add to this? Carrie?
Um, yeah, what I garnered from our meeting was um. If it's not broken, don't fix it right now, which it seems like. And Laura can correct me, that things can be remedied by moving some special programs rather than a redistricting of buildings. Right, um. And the other thing was to um. Repeat what you said. And Margaret had brought that up at our meeting room, that we need to look at the selectmen, look at how's a form for housing and replacement of that. Before we make changes, we need to look at the bigger town picture. And the other thing was, maybe since we're on the topic of it, something struck me that Melissa said initially about being able to see a school. But yet her kids had to go to another school, maybe we could tweak our current status and say, if. Kids a half a mile, they can pick whichever district they want, I mean. That we were. Giving a little taste of, I don't know what. Ramification that has, but, I mean, is a half a mile, we, you can't decide it tonight, maybe you can take a certain. Um proximity, proximity, quarter of a mile or a half a mile, and then the kids can choose. You know, so there, those are my three statements.
Thank you, Terry, Andrea.
Um I think probably a lot of us have the same take on message, and I think it was um. What was brought home to me is the redistricting in two thousand and four um. By appearances from the documentation that we had, uh it happened. Fairly quickly, and it was pushed a little bit by crisis. Uh and then we see what the process happened in two thousand and twelve, and I think again in two thousand and nine, maybe there were, there's two reports. Where things were looked at a little bit more thoroughly. And I like the idea of um being a little bit forward thinking. And looking at everything that's going on and working. Like with this, like we're bringing in other um stakeholders and other entities to really, you know, I think that that's probably something that as a district, you would want to be doing, make sure we're doing every ten years. Right, just kind of getting an overview of where we stand, so that we don't get into a situation where we're forced to do something really quickly, um and and. By all accounts, it's not something that needs to happen right at this moment, and we might have a lot of other things going on that take a lot of time. Um we have equity audit, uh so maybe there's some things to focus on now, but in in the near future, it'd probably be a good time. To be taking another snapshot of where we are and what's coming forward, so we're not caught up. Um and Margaret.
Uh yeah. Um I certainly agree that something has to be done now where there are issues. Uh but the whole notion of redistricting is a major project and another major project going on, and I want to be a little clearer. We know that there's buildings going on, we know there's possibly fiber optic systems coming here, we have no clue who those people are. What children they're going to bring, and what our uh city town's going to look like in. Uh you know, two years, and so until we have a better understanding of that, I think that really thinking about redistricting now is premature. But I think that there are issues that will be taken care of now, or can be made, there are clues. But I do like your idea, uh Terry, except I'm going to say one thing, suppose I live a half block away from that half mile. I mean, you know, that's that's the trouble with, you know, and I think, you know, I think there should be some accommodation, I'm not. I'm getting what you said, I I certainly agree with you, but making it a physical. Statement for for mileage.
Well, I'm just saying, we can't decide that right now, it's just. Well, that's a little thought on that.
That's why I'm going.
You can't expect to work out.
Because I'm going to suggest, okay, that maybe uh people who are willing here. Of the school. Could ask to have their children come there. You know, um if it doesn't affect transportation, but you know, I'm I'm not sure mileage or whatever, but I think that there could be, you know, a statement. That if there is a hardship on a family, that accommodation can be made, I think that. I think that's been. Part of the process in the last few years, and I think that could continue.
Well, so to be transparent with anyone who paid attention. I asked for this, and then I didn't go to the meeting because I had a prior engagement that was on the books long before uh this happened. So I appreciate you going through the motion, I appreciate Dr. Dur's um. Information, I've read through the slides, I've, thank you, Kelly, I saw your snapshots, I read through everyone's pronouns. Um I, Terry, I have to say that I really like your idea of perhaps putting something in place now. Excuse me, I don't think that um, you know, with everything that's going on and everything that's laid out, perhaps redistricting isn't the solution right now. And if it were, what does that, you know, how does that scope creep out, and I don't think anybody wants to. Um think about rolling that rock over, right? Um we've got a lot, we have bigger fish to fry, I do love, so um perhaps. Getting back to things, measures that we could do right now. If you're school choice and you desperately want to go to one elementary school, perhaps we leave it to the discretion of the superintendent, that. The answer is not always yes to get into that elementary school, maybe we look at the numbers and see how, you know, where the balance lies, does the school. Are we like in kindergarten at one school, is that school, you know, are they in jeopardy of losing a section? Perhaps we could, you know, maybe to be a little bit more mindful of, instead of just, oh, yes, example, not be Carson, you can absolutely go to your. First elementary school of choice, I think that it should be um. Said and clearly stated, it will be at the discretion, thank you for your. Your choice, but we are going to decide. Where we can put you, kind of thing. And I'm, Margaret, to your point, I'm with you on a hard boundary, it's difficult to make hard boundaries, you know, and I think that, again, and not to end it. Going back many years to when, you know, we were zoned for one elementary school, but I couldn't physically hear the other elementary school. It was when I applied to the superintendent at the time, it was very, it was a very easy project, it was a very easy process, it was very easy. For me to say, look, this is where we live, we're, you know, quarter mile from this school, half mile from the school. Um I would really like me to go there, and the superintendent was very clear, stating back to me, you will not be bused. Which I never expected, so I think that that process is, that's already there. Those measures are there, and I think um parents who do, parents and families who do send their child. To perhaps a school that's closer to them, although in their zone somewhere else, I think it's reasonable that it's up to you to get your child there. It's a hundred percent of your, yeah. So there. To, yes, parents will get this, so I appreciate you all going through the motion, I um again, apologize for I couldn't be there. Uh but once again, I had a prior invitation that was on the books long before uh the date came up, so. Yeah, um so I I just want to point out the fact that I know Andrea brought up the equity audit, and I I just think that, you know. Whatever the future is of what we're looking at, that we want to have equity on the forefront of this, so. You know, and and I think too, um both Margaret and Melissa's point, um and. And Terry's too, around these boundary lines, things, that there might be other ways to look at this in a more creative way around what would be best for our district, and um, you know. Laura, you mentioned that there are different programs in different schools, and you know, maybe, maybe there's ways to make. Things accessible to everyone and have parents get to choose. Um so, you know, I think that once we, if you get to that place where we start looking at it, I I think we should have opportunities for lots of things to be on the table, to look at this. And that, you know, for us to. Have to keep on shifting lines. Seems like that's not an efficient way to look at this, so are there better ways for us to kind of look at how we can move forward? Um to have the best school system for all of our families, so. Thank you.
Um I do, um just want to come back to something that Andrea had mentioned about, you know, that more long range vision, and. Just because we're thankfully not in this like crisis situation for next year, thank goodness. Um. Doesn't mean that we shouldn't, you know, put it on the back burner and keep remembering that, you know, it's been a long time since we really, well, since we have looked at it the way that. It was looked at in those reports, it was so comprehensive, I could not believe the detail of how many scenarios they looked at for. Which grades to put with which grades and why they were rejected or not. Um so I think if we can start thinking about, you know, we'll finish the equity audit, we'll have more information about. Each school and what equity looks like across the district and we can start envisioning what we might. Want without having to respond in a crisis fashion that, you know, uproots kids with their warning. We don't, no one wants that.
No. So any other comments? Thank you again. So we will again continue to revisit this and we will um vote as to how to pursue at our next meeting.
Hey, next on our agenda, superintendent update. Thank you. Um. If you didn't have a guest speaker, I did not see. Okay, uh can we, I'm gonna, I mean, if they're here, I'm not definitely on them to have them, you know, the first block here. You can give one second just to. I don't see, I don't see them online. They had asked for the link um as well. I don't see them.
Where?
Kitty, please.
No, I have to.
Yeah, okay. So um, yeah, I don't think so. So uh we'll we'll put that off. If they join, we'll we'll come back, but Kitty. Um wanted to give an update on our partnership with Monmouth Pride. Um so, but we'll put that aside. And so our next guest speaker, hello, Dr. Harris. Uh I'd like to introduce you to um. Dr. Alan Harris, the uh principal of Falmouth High School. And so I ask um uh Dr. Harris to come and talk a little bit more about uh the. Uh the plans. The interventions that uh that we have in place and that uh we're looking to the future for for uh ensuring that our students are graduating.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. Uh there was, you know, a recent article talking about the dropout and the work we're doing related to dropouts at Falmouth High School. And I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the work we're doing and also, you know, in my. We're thirty years now in in education. The topic and dropout rate is always fascinating to me in the five districts I've worked in in three states. The the calculation, we always think when we think of dropout rate, we're saying, oh, that must mean how many kids didn't graduate at your school. And. Massachusetts, like uh other states, has a rather complex. Graphic about how they calculate exactly what that dropout rate is. In Massachusetts, it actually goes all the way into October of the next year. Right? To see did the student re-enroll. And I only share that in the sense it's been my experience. That if at at the site level, working with our our really hardworking counselors and teachers and administrators. If we are spending a lot of time trying to figure out how we calculate this and what that number means, we're missing what's right in front of us. Which is seniors, right? And no matter. We'll deal with that calculation and if you look at graphs that compare an end of seventy five thousand to an end of a hundred and ninety one, right? You're gonna see lots of volatile movement versus what you have over a one percent factor. The bigger piece, I think, for us is what's happening with students right in front of us. And and that's really what we talked about in terms of the work, which was. Uh and really worked on well before I got there, looking at what's happening with our seniors. To give you a really quick background. In two thousand eighteen. There were a hundred and ninety eight seniors enrolled, a hundred and ninety four of them graduated. In two thousand nineteen, a hundred and ninety two were enrolled, a hundred and eighty seven graduated. In two thousand twenty, a hundred and ninety nine were enrolled, a hundred and ninety sevens, a hundred and ninety seven graduated. In twenty twenty one. A hundred and eighty six were enrolled, a hundred and eighty three graduated, and in twenty twenty two, a hundred and eighty six were enrolled and a hundred and eighty six graduated. And that hundred and eighty six number is is really due in large part to a grant that Principal Gans wrote for. To say, coming out of COVID, we see this large breadth of data across our students. Because of different ways in which they approach going through and 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 working through COVID and recognize there was a need to intervene pretty quickly. And was able to get a grant, what we call a gap counselor, to really target the seniors that were in the most jeopardy of of not graduating. And that work resulted in that number. Really fortunate. The work of Mr. McMahon last year, his time as interim principal was really to say, that's gonna be essential going into the next year and the grant was aspiring. And Dr. Doer, who supported the with the school committee, was able to fund that position starting this year, where otherwise we would have not had that position to begin. It also allowed us to begin to look more proactively and say, not just where our seniors are right now. What's happening, what's coming up, and how we begin to look at that. As a result of the work of the Gap Gap Counselor this year, we had the lowest rate of S for seniors at the first semester that we've had in five years. Additionally, we're starting to identify some of the systemic issues we see with larger gaps. And when the opportunity right for the grant came up again. We wrote to be more proactive and begin to look systemically, looking at tier two interventions academically. To be able to say in their sophomore year, in their freshman year, where we see trends related to attendance. Maybe they're getting Cs or Ds, but we know that trend of attendance and or issues in algebra or issue in English. Can lead to those asking eleven and twelve. How do we get more systemic in planning and preparing and bringing people in to help? We have really hardworking people at Falmouth High School, care deeply about kids. How do we connect each of those individuals into a system that needs to be better? And and that was really hard. You can't was to explain and help the community know, I think, one of the things I'm most proud and honored to be a part of Falmouth High School. Is and Falmouth Public Schools is a proactive nature that people take, not waiting for a problem, but saying, here's where it is. And I have found in my time across this country doing this work, sometimes when you go to say you're doing that work, all people hear is the problem. And and we are working really hard on the solution. I think you can answer.
Thank you. Melissa, I don't have any questions, but I thank you for that data. There appears to be a lot of rhetoric out there that our graduate numbers are dwindling or they're. The graduate numbers are dwindling and the dropout rates are um gaining and clearly they are not. And I am very appreciative to former principal Gans for writing for that grant. I am very grateful to Dr. Dur for. Finding them in the budget to make sure that that gap counselor remains in place. So that we do, you know, work, it's our job as public school educators to prepare these kids for the world that, you know, that these kids, these young adults and. You know, sometimes in years past, I think. When kids kind of started going down the path, there was an effort, there might have been a a life vest thrown, come on, come on, Dad. Sorry, you know, but now, you know, I love the fact that we're not, we're not quitting on them. We're not giving up on them and. I think that it really is a. A testament on how serious Falmouth Public Schools takes. Every flipper, every graduate. So I thank the team. I thank everyone and thank you for bringing us to this.
Thank you much. Leah, um. So it. Thank you for sharing the true story behind the data. Um but I I think. It is, it's, it is really important that, you know, when when things are getting put out, you know, to the to the public um. In. Data that shows that there is this big increase of dropout rates. But that's not the true story of what's going on. So I I guess my question is. How do we correct that? Because, you know, looking at that graph. Was a little stunning to me, right? I in the paper seeing that. I'm hearing from you that we had a hundred percent of our seniors graduated last year.
In twenty twenty two.
In twenty twenty two.
Right.
Um. But I'm gonna add to this question because. You were talking just about seniors and and I'm concerned around our sixteen enough, right? So. So um so I have kind of two full questions of. How do we help? The public really understand the true story, what's going on um with the data? Like how can we, maybe we could show another chart? For example, in the paper that really represents what's truly happening within the schools. Um, where is that disparity of what's that chart shows and how the numbers and then how do our sixteen? And up who are not seniors? Falling to this as far as that's.
So a couple of things. One, you know. That graph, right? The lines. Covered actually one percent. The huge, what it looked like this, this. Change was technically less than one percent and for us that's actually about four. Actually about two students. Good.
Just pre-assumed, right?
I mean, well, just just follow follow your perspective. I think what's important. From my vantage point, trying to lead a group of hardworking teachers and and kids and carry advantages, right? Is a- as much as I would love to try to spend a lot of time trying to discredit a a graph that that painted. Uh I thought was inappropriate picture of the work that we do in our school, the work that people do and then act and create an inaccurate representation of what's really happening for kids at Falmouth High School. I can't control that and chasing that narrative has never served me well. What has helped me is try to find brand advocates. People who do believe, who experience with the work, who will who will tell their truth and tell their story. And in this day and age, tell your story wherever you can. Tell people what is really going on at our school. The story initiated. Around work being done. With the second part of your question. The grant we wrote for this year is to specifically begin to take more systemic approaches. Taking our students right now that are in ninth, tenth and eleventh grade. Meetings have happened with our counseling team and guidance team to begin to understand patterns. We just did a survey with our teachers about multi-tiered support systems and and tier two academic interventions. That we can hopefully through the grant be able to build and begin to offer as soon as the summer and in the fall and as as well as some of those piloted this spring. That begin to not look at just trying to triage when they fail a class. But trying to proactively teach them, give them skill sets that are gaps in their maybe development that's gonna be a a burden that they may be able to pass on to. Actual skill set pieces that will be built in is the grant that we were telling the story about. Of trying to be more proactive with. And and um you know, I I think that's the message we're wanting to get out as the work being done by our by our students and our. And our kids and and our council staff and and the team to be proactive with the students that we see. The breadth of where students are at in our school right now. Some having tremendous skills and assets, both in their skill and knowledge sets and work and also their ability to do and afford themselves in school. And people across that spectrum at the other side too. It's wider than it's than I've seen in a long time. So how do we address those needs and also provide extensions and opportunities to students who are in the middle of those opportunities? Those are happening as well. That's the challenge.
So it sounds like having those stories, right? Those anecdotes, those the. Instead of just looking at the numbers, the quantity, it's looking at the quality.
Uh yeah, we hope that our theory of action about how we're approaching meeting the needs of students, working with teachers who work directly with students, supporting them in their efforts, working with. The students beyond the day where we need to, right? Results in. The data matches that as you go. You use the data as a check with the real life stories and work that you do.
Andrea. Uh. I really appreciated when you said that um you weren't just looking at the problem, but you're looking for solutions. And that there has been intervention in place and that you're going back and um looking. For an earlier place to do that. So we're not again doing a scramble catch up at the end that we, you know, kind of in. Or that over time. And so I guess my question is um I'm glad that there are grants being written, but. Do we? Find that this is a position that needs to be more permanently funded in some way that. We're not gonna be always worrying about writing that next grant and getting them.
I mean, I I'll offer just as a a as a principal, and that's what I was so. Impressed about in July. I haven't been in many school districts where a grant is written like that and you see a need and 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 already. That's getting funded for the next year for that particular position. I see grants as the opportunity to do the innovative work. To see what works and sticks before you're investing long term. District money that that's gonna carry out with these long term positions, right? And so we wrote this particular grant more to be able to build capacity of the system. Rather than having a, say, person. So this is, this is having people be able to do work that helps build a multi-tiered support system and a way to monitor this. Helps us be more effective in how we're doing it. Uh and yes, it may result that in 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 fall of next year, I'm talking to the conversation with Dr. Dewar that says, this is where we think we can go and we can head. Uh in in other positions, but I think the grants give us an opportunity to to kind of innovate. Um and then see where that works and then lead to the next one. In this particular case, the innovation that came last spring. Found a really clear need that and we also hope that as we get better at our work and have less triage at that senior year. We'll be able to transition the work of that counselor to do more of this sixteen, you know, kind of sophomore freshman work as well.
Great. Any other questions or comments? This is wonderful. Thank you so much for joining us and giving.
So uh my next update uh and in um the notes, uh I just wanted to talk a few minutes about the upcoming articles uh at town meeting. So we briefly touched on on the past, we're getting, you know, it's it's getting refined. Uh the language um. Still maybe, uh this is really close for for this one. It might still be in a little bit of a draft, but for article twenty two at the town meeting. Um that is gonna be recommended by the finance committee. Uh that uh the money uh that was left over in the article uh two of eleven twenty nineteen. The generators, a hundred thousand and in article one of January twenty one, the Morse font file replace uh replacement. A hundred uh fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand will be uh recommended to be moved to cover the lawn school uh elevator repair. And at a hundred and sixty thousand and the Morse font school fire line replacement at ninety thousand. Uh so we're not asking for new money. We're asking uh for money that um that was no longer needed in two articles and have that switched to two two needs, immediate needs. That that need to be done this summer. Uh we do not, I'm still waiting on the draft article language uh for uh pursuing phase one for um. The design work, uh engineering, um architectural uh plans for three schools for new roofs. Uh that it's been indicated that we we need. Uh that's at North Falmouth, East Falmouth and Morse font. Uh but I do not yet have, I will be updated when I get the um the draft language on that. You may also see at town meeting, um there are an article. That uh will be rescinding funds from uh articles across town that uh the projects are completed. But there were uh money there. We always like to say that uh we came in under budget. And so we have five projects that we came in under budget. There were um funds. Um available and so they may be uh taking um rescinding the funds from any one or all five of those at this time. Either way, our projects are done, the scope and the work's done, so the money is there. It's not for our use. Uh so that's.
Okay.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
Will we before um town meeting, know the amounts on the lines for these? Just.
I just wanted.
Yeah, just what, you know, what the numbers look like for those. Not that it matters, because I know it's not our money, but I I don't, I don't like to not know. We're going in not much money we're talking about.
Honestly, if you give me a second.
Oh, I'll give you a second. I just.
I'm so sorry. Didn't have it queued up, but I know it's here. And what we can do?
No, I was.
You want me to send it? You want me to send it?
Okay, all right, that's fine.
When is Tommy next? Eighty four, seven? Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure of the other articles. That, you know, when we get the.
Pressure in our minds.
Yeah, all right. All right. I'm sorry. Okay, um my next update, I uh is very exciting. Uh Dr. Tyler and I have been uh making our rounds to our partners in Woods Hole. We've been meeting with the directors, uh talking about our initial goals, um the status where we are uh and. We've been meeting with the directors, uh, talking about our initial goals, um, status where we are, uh, and, um, just the recommitment, um, to the process. I'm gonna, you want to add anything, Dr. Tyler, on our meetings?
I, I think one of the great things that's coming out of our meetings is we're meeting individually at each institution is understanding how the job force for each of them is changing, their workforce, what their workers would like, the type of work that's done. Um, and so one of the things that we're getting opportunity to do is, is kind of reinvigorate the level of advisory that each of our partners has provided, uh, to decisions we're making about letting up these, um, when we're bringing students into the village to different sites and then also how we might be shaping or doing. Um, one of the examples we just had was the work of some of the, um, marine engineers at USGS and just understanding how some of their work is shifting. And, um, they tend to have, you know, groups that are coming in and what winter looks like for them versus summer and getting expeditions up and running again, and the ways in which, um, some of our students right out of high school or maybe with some associate level work could be part of that workforce and just kind of keep reshaping how we thought the work.
And, uh, it seems like the ones that we have, uh, that list so far, we still have, uh, several, um, to, to meet with. Um, they, they would really like to have a, a resigning, uh, reception again. Um, are, it's a good prompt to have, but they all want to, they all want to host. Uh, so, um, sometime in June, we're looking, um, to, to, um, hold a reception and of course, you know, I hope everyone comes, but we'll get that information out too. Uh, but it's exciting that, just that recommitment that we're seeing with everyone.
Terry, thinking of recommitment, I went a little ago with the group and went to different places. And so if you go again, would you, could I go with you? No, I'm in so individual places, yes. I can't believe I've lived in town so much of my life and we didn't know all the things there in that little village there, um, so.
It's exciting.
Yeah, since I'm retired, I, and she won't notice it too.
There may be a seat on the cutting room, if you want to go to that also. Okay, I may have got a bit of a- Um, and then, but just the, uh, last update I wanted to give tonight, our updated kindergarten numbers. Uh, I believe it was around eighty-nine, the last time I recorded, worked for one twenty-nine. Yes, we're excited, we want our kindergarten students enrolled. Uh, the next full week registration is, uh, March twenty-seventh to thirty-first, and there'll be an evening session that Thursday on the thirtieth, just like we did, um, this past, uh, year. But we'll, we'll be getting out the, the message with families and hopefully they share that and, and uh, hope, hope for increased numbers after, after that.
And just, how does that compare to previous years in early March?
So, uh, you know, our kindergarten registration tends to come in, in, in May and, and June and some of our schools, we're still in the summer, looking, so actually, um, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I don't know, but it feels like it's fire, I don't know.
It does feel like it, I don't remember which time, but I can certainly get that.
If we are laying out a bomb or it is just, yeah, the same, yeah, trapped.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much for your update. Um, next routine business, uh, school committee minutes of February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion? Um, any edits?
Oh, you're not going to share?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just see it's out of the quarter.
Okay, so no edits, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for those. Uh, committee number reports. Any committee number reports? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm just, oh, there's some, um, future information, that's okay. Our classroom future information.
Is it related to one of the presentations or is there a question?
No.
Okay, so you know how we're using that form, now you can-
Okay.
Okay, great. Uh, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
They were saying aye. Passes, happy wonderful evening.
Thank you.